Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on March 5th, 2024. Please rise for the invocation by Councilmember Felix Guines.
Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord, for your many, many blessings. We thank you for this season, oh Lord. We come to you with an Irish blessing. May the roads rise to meet with you. May the winds be always at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face. May the rains fall soft upon the fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in His hands of the hollow of His hands. We ask all these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Councilman Dimming, will you lead us in pledge? Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
The mood.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Carrie, will you read those changes, please?
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5I. Resolution assigning lease interest with Rebel Boat Works and Shipyard to Tina Canet. Adding 5M, resolution authorizing repairs to Savaro Park tennis lights from Weaver Electric in the amount of fifty-eight thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Adding 5N, resolution authorizing repairs of Todd Miggas Ballpark Lights from Weaver Electric in the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Adding 5O, resolution authorizing repairs of Todd Miggas Northfield Lights from Weaver Electric in the total amount of thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines to motion the agenda as amended. All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I've got a proclamation to proclaimate, but we have a special visitor and some folks to do that. Come in before, right? Crank her up. No, it is March, and it is, this one works. And it is St. Patrick's, and you've seen the, you know, the decoration and the parade ready? The grandstand's ready to parade, and that's this week. And so we're real proud to celebrate our Irish heritage and the contribution of everyone who's Irish or has Irish tendencies like me to argue, drink, and fight, to, you know, on behalf of the city of Biloxi, offer this proclamation. Whereas, for four centuries, Americans of Irish heritage have contributed their lives and fortunes to their adopted country. Whereas the Irish were the largest European group to inhabit the thirteen colonies in the seventy-five years leading up to the seventeen-seventy-six Revolution, and played a significant role in the war for independence. Whereas Irish-Americans have excelled in every facet of life, including education, science, medicine, the arts, and politics. Whereas the Hibernian Marching Society of Mississippi was formed to foster, promote, and perpetuate Irish traditions, heritage and fellowship of Irish and Irish-American descendants along the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And it is a viable ethnic organization that contributes energy and funds to enhance the quality of life. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, Mississippi, hereby proclaim the month of March, 2024, as Irish Heritage Month. So thank y'all. We love you.
And I would like to introduce our 2024 Graham Marshall Allen Leckie, 2024 Colleen Kerry Quavis, to the city, the councilmen, the mayor, and everyone here. And thank all of you. We hope to see you at the parade with these two. We also have refreshments. We're sorry, it's just green punch and ice cream and some shamrock cookies and all kinds of things in the back if anybody wants anything.
I'll put my report right after we finish doing that. So, yeah, let's do it.
Amen.
Aw, thank you.
All right, we're gonna have a five-minute break to enjoy cake and cookies or whatever they have in the back room. But I would like to recognize David Shoemaker, who just newly got elected to Ward Seven. He's in the back of the room. If he wants to come up and speak, have any words, that'd be nice.
Come over here and sit down if you want.
We can do that now.
I appreciate that, y'all. Thank you. I just wanna say, my first day's gonna be the nineteenth. I'll be sworn in on the nineteenth. But I'm looking forward to it. I know the last couple of months, nobody's been here for the Ward Seven. So hopefully, we can get some things done. I'm excited about it. And continue to work with the administration, you guys, councilmen, and doing some good things.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a picture of you as you were before you assumed office.
Before you assumed a position.
Congratulations, Councilman Shoemaker.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to it. All right, five-minute break now.
Yeah, hey. Mr. Quavis, no. Yeah. I don't know David that well, but I know he's on the Civil Service Commission. I go to those meetings, so I tease him a little bit. So have you determined that you're overpaid, overworked and underpaid yet? No. Right. And at the end of four years, you're gonna realize how much you don't know. You still have to learn. That's the way it was here. It's like, I can't believe it. But you'll do fine. You're a good, honest man. All you have to do is shoot straight with folks, you know? You'll be fine. You'll be fine. I'm happy for you. That's it. Rolling along, yeah. Just, and if you have to cry, just go into a closet away from everybody, close the door, and cry till all the tears are out.
What's going on, man? How are ya? Congratulations again. Year later, still going on. It's good. Yeah. I think he enjoys it. A young guy, energetic, you know? Can't beat him, you know? Too much movement.
I don't know where you got the cookies, but the cookies were very good. They're good. I like those.
You what? Good kid.
All right. Unfortunately, back to city business. Mayor, are you done with your report, or?
Yeah, I think so. No, I forgot one more. Want to spread, ask the council to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes.
All right.
And we do have Nick, a little departmental report from Chief Geiser, and he may bring someone up also.
Thought that was a gavel.
All right, just, I know, I struggle with it daily. Just wanted to give a quick rundown, since we've had our new ambulance service for a month, a full month of February. Things have gone great. You know, of course, there's always little hiccups here and there with communications, but that was expected. So just to give a quick recap of total calls, they ran twelve-
Yeah, Nick?
So they ran twelve-hundred and thirty-five total calls. That encompasses all Priority One all the way through Nine. Priority One and Two, which is our life-threatening and serious calls, they had eight-hundred and seventy-nine of those twelve-hundred and thirty-five calls. And their average response time was seven minutes and thirty-one seconds, and that has taken zero exceptions. So that's, we're very, very pleased. Our crews are pleased. Everything seems to be going well for the ambulance crews themselves. So we're seeing great results, and I think, hopefully, y'all are hearing some positive feedback from everybody that's having to use our services. There, we've got two representatives from Pafford. If y'all have any questions, they're more than willing to get up here and answer anything you got. Or me, for that matter, I can answer anything.
They did deliver some beans today, too, so.
Yes, yes, they delivered quite a bit of beans, if you notice.
Mayor's challenge.
Is there any major problem you're running to?
No, sir. No. You know, of course, there's been a hiccup here where, you know, an out-of-town crew might go to an address, say, a big complex, and they don't exactly know where the building is. So it's a little bit of a delay, but it really has not affected the response times. Plus, it running out of our fire stations. They're kinda right there incorporated with our trucks, so it seems to be working really well.
Are they running five or six in the city of Biloxi?
I can, I can sense. Six. Six, six on.
Let me say, too, this is two times since I've been mayor that I've seen an ambulance beat a fire truck to the scene. And that's a fact. Two times that I've seen it personally.
Chief, I have a question. So if, since Gulfport, looks like they're signed an agreement with them, and that should increase the number of ambulances in the area, should they run short, they can pull from that resource as well?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, if for some reason they found themselves needing additional resources. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you, guys, because I don't, too often I don't see ambulants in my community. And last Tuesday, I was the one who called the ambulance service, and they showed up on time. And that's a blessing to see that. And they came on time, very professional. And I just, big ups to them, big ups to you guys, too.
Chief, that was seven minutes and something seconds?
Minutes and thirty-one seconds.
And no, no exceptions, is that right?
Zero exceptions. That's one-hundred percent compliance.
Let me repeat that for people who might be listening. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That concludes our reports.
Mr. Lawrence, you got a report?
Yeah, just the first thing, Mayor. What can we do about these mics? We have to buy new mics or do something different? And I had people in the back of the room say they can't hear us talk. So do we need to do something with the acoustics? There's something gotta be done for the people. We have these meetings so they can speak and listen, and they said they can't hear us talk in the back, back of the room. So I mean, I just wanna make sure. And I know these mics already went out a couple of times. Even you had to go get another mic, you know?
Yep. We'll do something about it.
Yeah. Did you look anymore about the races, or are you still working on that?
We did.
Say again?
We did. We looked into it, races.
Do we have to have a meeting or workshop just to let them know we're running?
We'll work something up. Again, you know, the data's out there. We're gonna try to put it together and see what can be done. There's a plan.
And I know they said that the parade for St. Patrick, is that just Saturday or next Saturday?
No, it's next Saturday. Did I say?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Same at the Town Green?
And here. And I think they're gonna wind up in the, across the street as far as the festivities after the parade.
Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Mr. Dimming? Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, several things. First of all, for anybody who resides in Edgewater Park, there's gonna be a neighborhood meeting next Tuesday, March 12th, at six o'clock at the Park Gazebo. And the topic's gonna be the historical designation concerns that some of the residents have there. Mr. Creel has agreed to attend, so I'm excited about that. The next Ward Five meeting is Wednesday, March 27th, six o'clock at the Snyder Recreation Center. That meeting is open to the public. Don't forget to move your clocks forward one hour before you put your head on your pillow Saturday night. And George, that would be before midnight. I know your head is not on your pillow usually before midnight.
Nah, that's not gonna work.
Okay. And that's, I wanna congratulate David Shoemaker again on his election victory in Ward Seven. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
The only thing I have, Director Allen contacted me today. This has been advertised and published, but I just want everybody to know that they're gonna start on the water tower on Pops Ferry Road to start prepping it for repairs and painting it. And so there may be some intermittent low water pressure as they complete those tasks. That concludes my report.
Okay. And I have no report. This moves us on to the public agenda, where we have citizen comments. A total time allowed of forty-five minutes. Each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you arrive to the desk, please write your name and address on the paper provided, as well as state it aloud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak?
Hi. My name's Bob Silvestro. I live at one-eighty-one Iris, I-R-I-S, Street in Biloxi. We moved here full-time about three months ago, my wife and I. We put about forty thousand dollars into our home and around two thousand hours of labor. We've traveled back and forth to our old home in Spartanburg, South Carolina. I have about thirty times. And our hopes was to get the challenged homes in our neighborhood to start getting fixed up. And every home that's next to me has started to do that. The problem I have is the transient community, or whatever we wanna call it, that's bias, over the last three months has gotten much more aggressive. There is trash everywhere, and the reason that I came here today was the home behind us, who was a couple from up north moving to that, I don't know what I'd wanna call what that house was a year ago, but they are putting a lot of work into it. They were robbed, and it is on their Ring camera. It was a guy with a miner's cap who I have seen walk up and down that street before. So the transient group of people that are living in a field that's by a school, I don't know, used to be a school, has gotten to the point, some reason or another, over the last three months have gotten much more aggressive. Gunfire, a lot. Fires. I understand from several people telling me that they can't go into the property, the police, because it's, the owner won't let them. All I know is, I really never thought that our biggest challenge was going to be the city letting this happen. And I thought it was going to be getting our neighbors to beautify their home. And we've decided to retire here. We fell in love with it. We came here on a casino junket. And if you go through that neighborhood, you'll see they're starting to build new homes. But something's going on to make the, I don't even know what today's world is to call them. And most of the homeless people that are around, they're very, they wanna work, they wanna, but there's a group that's come in the last three months. They're violent. Something has to be done, and I don't know what to do. I don't know where to turn. Does anybody have a suggestion? Who should I go to?
You with the chief.
But he's gonna say his hands are tied with that neighbor. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, sir?
My name's Neil Morris. I assume this is on. And today, I'm representing the Homeowners Association from Taylor Oaks subdivision on Pops Ferry Road, in particular, to voice the opinion of the fifty-nine families across seventy-two properties in our subdivision that adamantly object to a change in the zoning of some properties in the front of our residential area. It's case number twenty-four double oh six. And the purpose of that rezoning is to go from a zone designation of LB Limited Business to NB Neighborhood Business. And what you get with that is a higher caliber of business, and you get drive-through and things that aren't really conducive to the nursery next door or to our neighborhood. And it has a lot of impact on the traffic that's going down Pops Ferry Road today. It's like the Indianapolis 500 three times a day. In the morning, when Biloxi High and the people go to work. Noon, when everybody goes to lunch, and particularly in the evening, when everybody's coming home, the place is a madhouse. And we think the last thing that we need is to have a drive-through Pops Pizza at that location. So what we're trying to do is to prevent that zoning from getting changed. And if we could go ahead and do that, that would be great, because the family, and we're rather represented here today, we have probably some, several few that wanna go ahead and make a comment in addition to myself. But this thing was defeated at the last Planning Commission meeting, and it wasn't a unanimous vote, but it was a popular vote. So we'd like to have that maintained. And that's about the summation of what we're here to do, is to object to rezoning those properties.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Danny Waslenko. I live at eighteen ninety-four Paul David Drive, Taylor Oaks. And we're against, of course, the changing of the zoning. If you looked at the picture that the planet- If you looked at the picture that the planet, that was presented at the Planning Commission, and you look at all the cars from all the entrances, I don't know if you've ever been to that intersection like Mr. Morris referred to, but that's an accident waiting to happen. It's just, it's just not a good fit for the neighborhood. It's just not conducive. When you just look at this picture, and you can get that word about music, you can imagine sitting in a drive-through, and you're sitting right there in your backyard, and you just hear dum, 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 dum from the music. You know, it's zoned for a certain type of business. That's fine, but we just don't want these kind of businesses coming into that area. It's just, it's just gonna be detrimental to somebody's life, but I don't think it'll be good for the neighborhood, the nursery, or anything else. So hopefully y'all won't change the Planning Commission's decision of not allowing it to happen.
Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone? Okay. Anyone on my right, your left? Yes, sir?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is John Holiday. I'm in the real estate business, and I represent the owners, Mr. and Ms. Harris, of that property. And I empathize with everything I say. Taylor Oaks is a great subdivision. In fact, I have a dog in the lot. I developed the property down Campbell Road, cut it into lots, and sold three of them to the developers of Laurel Falls. So I'm familiar with the area. But Pops Ferry is a commercial road, period. There's no arguing about that. I went from the east end of the Biloxi Boundary, where you entered the Iverville, and from my car, and I stand to be corrected, but this is what I saw, I've done it three or four times. You have over eighteen properties. First of all, a cut is a road that goes by your property. A traffic light or a cut is usually what commercial properties are looking for. I counted, and I hate to name them because they're not doing anything wrong, but commercial businesses. Stark's Construction, First Baptist Church, the Blake Retirement Property, Bill Mitchell's Office Buildings, Handy Lock Storage, like, sorry about my voice, Fayard's Station in Delhi, Shopping Center next to Fayard's across from Cadence Bank, Tailgate's Restaurant, Sunny Mortgage, Rich's Car Wash, Polk's Drugs, State Farm right across from Taylor Oaks, only has one driveway in. The Dental Office, which cars are coming all day long, has one driveway in. The Pentecostal Church probably has five hundred people coming in and out of there on a weekly basis. The Family Dollar Store has no cut, has no light. The Dental Office across the street from Family Dollar has no cut, no light. Murphy Chiropractic has no cut, no light. Now we're getting into Sunkist. A lot of these businesses back up to subdivisions. There's no way around it. Pops Ferry is a commercial corridor. This is a great subdivision they're talking about. There's a big brick wall behind it, and it has a cut in Campbell Road, which most of these businesses do not. I just don't see what the, how it's gonna adversely affect anything. I mean, I put the land together for the Prime and Aid out there. Believe it or not, we had people objecting to it that lived around there. They said, "We don't want it coming." This is a highest and best use of this property is for, it's allowed. A restaurant is allowed by right. But they're just trying to embellish it and make it more convenient and everything. I don't see how it would hurt anybody in the subdivision behind there. I just don't think that, that kind of traffic, when you're talking about Pops Ferry Road, the thousands that come down there every week. Thank you. That's it. I just, I think it's a good project in highest and best use.
Anyone on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Heidi Hoy. I live at sixteen eleven Glenn Swetman Street. I actually didn't plan on talking tonight, but in regards to the homelessness issue, I wanted to bring up the fact that we're having a town hall meeting. It's hosted by Back Bay Mission and the Blues Club. And it is Tuesday, March nineteenth. Doors open at five. The meeting starts at five-thirty. Felix has been to a couple of them. It's very helpful for everyone to talk, the different, not only the Back Bay Mission, but other organizations to try to help the situation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Joy Shaughnessy. I am a Realtor, and I'm here to represent Ms. Donna Tindall, who is the owner of Papa John's. She is unable to be here tonight. She is homesick. I'm just gonna make it very brief. I wanted just to touch on a few things that I've heard, that the concerns that were brought to your attention from our homeowners. Ms. Donna Tindall has, owns, currently owns nine Papa Johns along the Mississippi Gulf Coast and in Hattiesburg. I have represented her in four of her endeavors with Papa Johns over the years. Have known her for a long time, have become very good friends with her, and can testify to her character and honor as far as her establishments and the way she runs and maintains her businesses. I just can't say enough about her personally. She is wanting me to put to rest the concerns about the vagrants that may be a concern to the neighborhood because of her longevity in business and with Papa Johns. That is a non-issue. It would not be a safety, a safe environment for her customers. It just would not be tolerated or happen. We have a daycare across the street. I don't know if the daycare's represented tonight. I would think that they would be here if that was, I would think that they would be here if there was an issue with vagrants hanging around that area or loitering. The second thing that I wanted to just address is the drive-through, which is why we're mainly here tonight. The Papa Johns is going to be built. We do meet the requirements for the current zoning. Tonight, we are here to discuss the drive-through. And I just wanted to maybe help the neighborhood understand as well as just explain or reiterate again. This is not a McDonald's drive-through. This is not a Chick-fil-A drive-through. It is operated completely different. You place your order online. It gives you a time when you can pick up your order. Pizzas are not made quickly. You don't get to, there's no microphone that you go stand in line and wait, and then go to the window and wait. You order online. You get a time when you can drive through the window to pick up your pizza. It's that simple. If you get there early, you're asked to go park or get back in line so that the people, if there's somebody waiting. But I don't see, you know, a wraparound or a congestion or a lot of traffic during that time. It's just to provide a service for her customer. And, and hopefully, we hope everybody here would be a customer. Her buildings are beautiful. She spares no expense. If you have not seen any of her, her properties that she's built, they are stellar. I think she would be an added value to that area. We have looked at many areas in Biloxi. We built a beautiful Papa Johns in Ocean Springs that is thriving. I just think it is a wonderful investment of her money and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Yes?
My name is Dale Harris. Together with my wife, we own the properties in question at eighteen ninety-six Pops Ferry Road, which is up for zoning, rezoning approval. I just wanted to touch on some things that had been mentioned during the Planning Commission hearing, one of which was that there is no change in the neighborhood that would warrant or permit a drive-through restaurant in this location. I just wanted to go back in history and remind the council that that whole area is in a state of permanent flux. Twenty-some years ago, there was a par-three golf course, driving range at the corner of Cedar Lake Road and Pops Ferry, where the Walmart Neighborhood Market is and the Arbor Landing, that used to be a vacant field. Now we have, besides those properties, we have the Catholic Diocese along there, Mississippi State University is along there, we have middle school along there, we have numerous other businesses, self-storage lockers that are there. Hulk Drugstore is there. They are permitted to sell beer. And if you remember, down around Jam Lane and Pops Ferry Road, there used to be an Ace Hardware Store. It is now a liquor store. I don't believe that the fact that a drive-through restaurant in this particular location is going to somehow damage the property values, or that it is going to be a dangerous place. With the daycare facility that is there, I would think if they had any concerns about increased traffic, or the danger to their customers or the children, that they would be the first to come down here and voice concern to you. I would recommend that the council approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to get up and speak?
Charlie Dellinger, nine seven two, Emily Drive, Biloxi. I don't know that the issue is just that it's a drive-through that's gonna be added to an eatery. There's, there's something that hasn't been discussed in all of this, and it's the other half of the building. Papa Johns is only gonna occupy half of what they're planning on building. So when you change this zoning, if you, in fact, you do, you change it from LB to NB, which lets them put a lot of other things in the other half of that building, things that the subdivision may not want next to it, things that, and, you know, I'm sure that, look, I have nothing against the people that are selling the property or wanting to buy it or put anything on there. You know, something's gonna be developed there, and we understand that. But, you know, at some point, Ms. Tindall may sell that property, and it may go from being a Papa Johns to something else that can be put in by right in an NB. And that's not something that I think the subdivision wants, is, there's a lot of things, I don't know if you've gone through and looked at all the permitted uses for NB, but there's a lot on there. I mean, I know that it may not be able to go in at this direct time because there is a daycare there, but a cannabis dispensary is allowed in NB. And if for some reason the daycare ever left, somebody could put a dispensary in there. You know, so there's a lot of things in NB that the neighborhood may not want. So I think that may be some of it, other than just it being a drive-through put on a pizza place. So I think that's the reason a lot of people are against it. That, and they may not want a dumpster being dumped, you know, emptied out and the noise directly in their backyard at four o'clock in the morning, you know, twice a week. Living behind a restaurant one time, trust me, it happens. Four o'clock in the morning, you get woken up every, twice a week, every four, you know, every morning at four o'clock when they're coming through dumping those dumpsters. So, you know, I don't live directly behind there, but I know there is some concern there for that and what that would allow to be coming in there potentially. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to get up and speak? Okay, if not, comments are closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carey, will you read ordinance A?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from regional business to downtown for one fifty-six Nixon Street.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Guines?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Glavine. Being a first reading, we will move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for seventy-three parcels of land from agricultural and regional business to limited business agricultural and agricultural restricted for properties along Old Highway sixty-seven.
Okay. Previously moved by Mr. Glavine. And I lost my paper. Seconded by Mr. Tisdale? There it is. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
I just want to make a statement on this. Over the years, we have observed the exploration of land in our watershed area for recycling and industrial purposes, resulting in significant environmental degradation and threats to our precious natural resources and waterways along the Chudaka Bluff River and other tributaries. It is clear that these activities have not been conducted with due regard for the health of our environmental and community. In response to these concerns, I'm pleased to recommend the designation of the property east of Joe Hustley Road with this proposed ordinance, from agricultural to agricultural restricted, which will help prevent further industrial intrusion and safeguard our environment from harm. Additionally, the properties west of Joe Hustley Road is proposed to be designated as limited business from regional business, to facilitate development that is in harmony with what is going on in the area, which is residential growth, and to prevent conditional uses that have led to unwanted legal disputes with developers who have strayed from their original intentions. It is essential that we take proactive steps to protect our community and uphold our commitment to serving the people who have entrusted us with their votes and their voices. By taking these actions today, we are fulfilling our oath to represent your best interests and ensure a sustainable and thriving future for not only Ward Six, but for all of Biloxi. And I just want to make that statement to predicate this, this proposed, this second reading of this proposed ordinance change.
Okay, any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, there were a couple of Planning Commission meetings on this. I sat through each of them, and I know this has received much discussion here over the past, oh, quite a few months. And I don't have anything that I can add to Mr. Glavine's comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, uh, Kenny?
Yeah?
You have a group of wetlands, a stage wetland, correct?
Correct. There was a watershed study that was done by our engineering department, provided to the Planning Commission, that shows that all the flow of stormwater is caught in this big basin where these, the majority of these seventy-three parcels are located. This action today would prevent, it, it actually only allows you to do nature trails, one house per five acres, and it would preserve that watershed to collect the water in that basin as it should be intended for.
The wetland is still wetland. Then other two, you made it more restricted.
On the west side of Joe Hustley, it's a little higher land. And if we leave it as RB, then we'll find ourselves in similar situations where people apply for conditional use, and, and then they don't do what they said they were gonna do, and we find ourselves in court disputing what they're trying to do. By, by moving it to limited business, I think it's more in harmony, like I mentioned earlier, with the residential development.
And agriculture restricted is pretty tight.
About the tightest you can get.
Yes, that's, you have two in the wetland.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes?
Thank you.
This brings us to Resolution C.
Resolution to deny a zoning map amendment for two parcels of land from limited business to neighborhood business for zero and eighteen ninety-six Pops Ferry Road.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Demming?
Peter, being that this is right outside of my neighborhood, do I have any conflict of interest issues that I need to be aware of with my bias in voting on this? Will it affect anything?
You live in?
Taylor Oaks.
Taylor Oaks?
Almost right, right down from where this is gonna go.
That's probably a personal decision for you, but if you feel like it affects you adversely, then it's your decision.
I have no problem voting on it. I just want to make sure that it's not gonna be challenged if I do vote on it based off of that perceived conflict. off of that perceived conflict, if there is a perceived conflict.
Yeah, it still may be challenged, but I don't know if there's a conflict.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any discussion. I move the resolution for denial. I think that says it all.
Okay. Any other discussion?
None.
All in favor? Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Mr. Creel, if you will. Just a brief, brief description, if you would, between the types of businesses that are permitted in limited business zones, and those that are permitted in neighborhood businesses.
Well, I think the ones that are causing the most concern are the ones with drive-through access on them. You know, if you go to NB zoning, let's just use a worst-case scenario, that somebody might be afraid that a bar would open up next door. Well, in NB zoning, a bar is conditional use, so that wouldn't open up without them having to go back through you. Now, this is not one long building that they're proposing. There are two pieces of property here, and what they're proposing is the Papa John's on the piece to the west, and then they had proposed a multi-tenant strip center on the one to the east. And there was some concern at Planning Commission about, well, what could go into NB zoning? And I can give you, again, LB, LB is what we consider professional business. You know, although you have to have NB zoning to do a restaurant with a drive-through, you could do a restaurant right now. You could do a bank with a drive-through right now, without any zoning change. Let me see the ones that actually opens the door for some concern. Restaurant with indoor/outdoor seating is a permitted use, especially eating establishment is a permitted use. I'm talking about LB. Business surface offices, financial service offices, massage therapy, professional services, all of those are allowed as a use by right in LB zoning. A bank or financial institution with a drive-through window is allowed. A book or media shop, a convenience store with gas sales would be allowed as a conditional A dry cleaning establishment with drop-off would be allowed as a permitted use in LB. We have some others there that are zoned to conditional use for general retail and grocery store. Those would be conditional.
What about NB? Just, just a description of a few. You don't have to go down the entire list.
Okay. The, of course, the one we're talking about right now, the restaurant with the drive-through would be a permitted use if the zoning is changed. Again, restaurant with indoor/outdoor seating, a lot of them are very similar, LB and NB. Let me find the ones that are different. A convenience store without gas sales would be a permitted use in NB. It's not allowed at all in LB.
So I know there's a Dollar Store in the area, I believe. I don't know who their competitor is, Dollar General. Could Dollar General put a store there?
No, it's conditional use. General retail is considered conditional use in NB.
Okay. I recall there were some concerns about traffic, and there was a brief discussion on curb cuts off Pops Ferry Road, and then, then there was further discussion on ingress and egress on Campbell.
Yes, sir.
I guess to take the line off of Pops Ferry Road if they were waiting to be served, but also there's a preschool there on the other side of Campbell Drive. And I'm thinking, I don't know who eats pizza for breakfast, but probably lunch and supper. And I'm also worried about if you're eastbound, excuse me, if you're westbound on Pops Ferry, you just turn right into Campbell. But if you're going home, as most of the traffic is, in the early evening, they're coming west to east, and you got to cross the traffic there to get in or out. There's no traffic signal there.
Yes, sir.
So that was a big concern of mine. That's just a comment. The only other thing I heard at reference today, and also at the Planning Commission meeting, about dumpsters being emptied at 4:00 in the morning, there's, for those of you out there, there's an ordinance, they can't empty those dumpsters before, I think it's 7:00 in the morning, and all you have to do is contact the dumpster folks, or email them a copy, and they should comply, or they end up, I guess, dealing with code enforcement officers.
And two of the things that the owners did agree to do at Planning Commission, there was concern about having the curb cut right at the corner. You know, they have one that comes into the east of the corner, where it would actually be the, coming into the parking lot. They showed one right on the corner across from the daycare, and they offered to eliminate that one, so that you would basically come in on the east side, go up beside the building, and then turn and come out onto Campbell at the north end of the property. So they would eliminate that. Also, they would be required to put in a buffer between this property and the residentially zoned property behind it.
Do you recall what the vote was at the Planning Commission?
It was 8-3-1.
Yeah, it was an 8-3-1 vote. Right, that concludes my comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just, I'd have to vote to deny this. You have no need. You have no mistake in the zoning, and you're changing it from unlimited business to neighborhood, changes the character of the neighborhood. So you've got three biggies against it right off the bat to me. So I'd have to vote to deny it.
Okay. Anyone else have discussion? All in favor of the denial? All against? So 5-1. Moving on to Resolution D.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 142 Keller Avenue.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
This is on Keller, and across the street from Keller, we already passed two short-term rentals. So just with the old box warehouse, they actually, it was supposed to be a restaurant. They turned it into a house. They're all right there, together, short-term rental. So, Robert, I have to support that.
Supporting a short-term rental?
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion, Mr. Guines?
None.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous vote with Glavine out of the room. Moving on to Resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for short-term rental located at 135 Brady Drive.
I motion that.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Guines.
This is a brand-new, single-family house that I believe was built for the purpose of doing short-term rental. It's on Brady Drive, which runs down behind the Kangaroo Station. We've already approved one short-term rental right next door. They have provided the means of egress on this. They have stairs on the front and an elevator on the back, so...
Question, Jerry, that two-story blue house, didn't we approve that as short-term rental too?
Yes, sir, the one just now.
But you have two or three different properties, where it had been turned in as short-term rentals on, and there's some of them empty.
Yes, sir.
All right. Support that too.
Oh, my God. Hallelujah. I know, right?
You want me to check and see if he's still alive?
Oh, seriously. New girlfriend? I don't know. All in favor? Unanimous votes. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So I'll move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
I have no objections.
Mr. Tisdale?
A couple of questions on everybody's favorite item, item L. This is the MEMA District 9 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. I went and just looked at it and actually touched it, and it's probably eight inches high, and probably weighs six pounds. And I'm thinking, who compiles the plan? I would assume the city's gathered the data and turned it in to somebody. It's not, this isn't a city project. This is a...
We have to update it. We have to update it. It's been several years. We have to have, we have a, we have a, we have a, this is what we have to do.
So essentially, the county, the county contracted a firm to put this plan together. We're just adopting what the county came up with.
There's some interesting stuff in there, and it's not as daunting as it looks, because they break it down by county, and each county's about, I don't know, an inch thick or whatever. And I would assume the city uses this information in some form or fashion.
Yes, and Jerry can probably speak more to that, but it's all in the floodplain management.
Right. It refers to the number of buildings, the different kind of natural disasters, you know, they give you a rating on the probability of something happening. Jerry, I don't need anything.
Our plan for what we would do in the event that an event happens or an emergency happens, this is what we would do.
And I think this is for, what, the lower, five or six counties?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Mr. Deming? Mr. Guines?
None.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, the substitute was strictly taking Jimmy Knetz's name off to put his, I guess that's his wife, Tina.
That's his wife.
That was it. And on Repair Lamy Street, we're working with the county, is that 50/50, 80/20? How's that work with the helpers of Repair Lamy?
We really don't know the scope of the work yet. We don't, the scope of the project, the project is not known yet. We need to get out with the county and walk it. This is the one that Councilman Glazin got going, right, Councilman?
When you're talking about repair, we're talking about just paving, or we're talking about doing something else?
Really, it's work for the most part.
You heard George, right?
Yeah.
I mean, all we're doing is just getting them to agree.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote? Do we have any exceptions?
None.
No? Okay. Moving on to code enforcement.
All right. Item A, Ricky D. Deal Estate, 317 Nelson Road. This property is still in violation, but it's recently been sold, so we're going to have to go back and start with the new owner on this. The new owner is making progress on it, so we'll bring it back in the event that work stalls. On item B, 223 Lemieux Street, I would ask for 60 days on that property. They are working on it.
So I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
Okay. Item C, Thou Own Don, 152 Pine Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Marion P. Jones, 336 Hidenheim Avenue, this property is still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Marion P. Jones? If not, case is closed.
Item E, New Prime Inc., Zero Pine Street, that case has been resolved.
All right. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
So I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
We had a lot of activity last week, had to leave.
Yeah.
Give us a good update.
Didn't quite know how long that drama was going to unfold, so... Well, on the money side, we have 419.5,000. It's currently in step four or five. It's been there about six days, so we should have it into our city account six to seven days from now. That's going to be followed by an additional 2.4 million.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Right, we're right on time. Keeping up with the money.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Ody. Well, I want to thank you for dealing with the sidewalk on Beauvoir Road. Terrific response time. I've gotten a number of comments thanking me, and it wasn't me, it was...
Thanking him for.
Because he actually gets things done.
I was there getting beat. Okay.
He gets, that man gets things done.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale.
I want to thank, I want to thank you. I don't know who the noise maker is over there, but I want to thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous vote? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, and seconded by everybody.
George.
Deming.
Felix.
All in favor? Unanimous vote? Meeting adjourned.